The regular every the city council meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM, P-17, will now come to order. Roll call.
Councilor Hoag.
Here.
Councilor Lillis.
Here.
Councilor Hidrava.
Here.
Mayor Vasilevich.
Here.
Approval of the minutes, city council workshop, May 3rd, and city council meeting, May 3rd. No one has any corrections or changes? Call for a motion that we approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hidrava, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Hoag. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. And item D, approval of tonight's agenda, and under new business, we're gonna add an item eight, which is revisited lot prices out in West Eblith. If no one else has any other additions or corrections?
Mayor, were we considering removing item J six?
Are you gonna remove it or table it, Brian? What would you rather, just remove it or what?
Whatever's the simplest and the most proper.
Table it.
Okay.
Okay.
And with removal of item six. Any other additions or deletions? Call for a motion that we approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. We have no appointments or presentations at this time. And if anyone from the audience wants to address the council, Bill?
Is this on?
We have one.
We have.
I assume you're talking about the Heritage Committee, Bill?
That's right, that's right. Bill Aho, 1080 Industrial Park Drive, and I'm here as the Chair of the Eblith Heritage Committee to give you some information as far as 2015 is concerned. As you can see, I've handed out a information sheet to each one, and first of all, I'd like to give our mission statement. Mission of the Eblith Heritage Committee is to help maintain and expand the economic vitality of the community by supporting and promoting preservation and interpretation of cultural, history, and heritage of Eblith. You know, Eblith is a great community with untold treasures, which the committee will continue to research, cultivate, and expose over time. I want to express the committee's thanks to the council for your support in recognizing our need for a part-time person and subsequent hiring of Mary Ellen Higgins. Second, for providing the services of Blair Feldman, creative wingman, in the development of our website, eblithforever.com. And also tonight, I want to explain to the council, I want to inform you, our deliverables to the city of Eblith for the year 2015, what we have completed. And number one is the creation and development of the website. We are very appreciative. We now have information out in the public that we can give little tidbits over time as we discover. We appreciate that. We have to get Eblith's name out there. Second, this place matters award. Now, catch is a plaque that we have chosen this year to upscale. This plaque was given to Miners Bank for 2015 for this place matters. And how did this place matters get or evolve? Well, the National Treasure of Historic Preservation, which has been working since 1949 in trying to recognize historic places. In '12, they offered a nationwide campaign for this place matters, really get into the communities and recognize important places. 2015, the committee has chosen Eblith for the Miners National Bank. Now, this plaque, you go to Miners, which is on the left-hand side of the building, and we have decided to upgrade substantially the sign. And if I may, I'd like to read it. This place matters. Can we get a shot of this, or can you zero in on Brian over there? You, does it zero there? Okay. This place matters. The Eblith Heritage Committee honors the Miners National Bank of Eblith, and the Eblith Heritage Committee proudly recognizes the Miners National Bank for commitment they showed to the people on the Iron Range. Because of the bank's leadership and staff participation in the community, we are better placed to look. Incorporated in 1903, Miners National Bank of Eblith embodies a spirit and a vision this place matters as a unique and irreplaceable Eblith landmark. For these and the numberable other reasons, Eblith Heritage Committee designates Miners National Bank as a recipient for April 2015 award. Very proud of us. In France, we decided to pick up the Eblith and select them this type of sign. This will last forever. Also, number four are deliverables, the Fourth of July display. Nancy Rosin is the Chairman of this committee, and we do have some items in the basement of Eblith City Hall here. And last year, we chose to do it a little bit different, get more pictures, information out there, and we got a great response. So the feedback from the community was great. Number four, itemizing items at the library. Here's a big project that has taken Roger Achiever a couple of years, or maybe better, and here's the result. He has put together items on Iron Range Historical Society range history and the range reminiscing newsreels. We have 12 pages here of articles on Eblith, which totaled maybe about 350, 360 items pertaining to Eblith. He has spent many, many hours of honor, recognize Roger's achievement in bringing this forward. This will be available eventually at the city library. And last but not least, our Facebook page. And this is, I believe, Jackie, this is with the help of Blair Feldman as well. So we got our website, Facebook page, and delivery into the social world out there about Eblith. And we're pleased about that cooperation and effort with the partnership of the city of Eblith. And further, I want to recognize members of our art community. And that is Lois Bergerson, Genevieve Jam, Roger Achiever, Beretta Nemnitz, Nancy Rosin, Charlotte Leaf, Rosemary Zelman, Rose Jednick, Tucker Nelson, Robert Kivala, Robert Hedman, Alma Voss, Julianne Bagdana. I hope I didn't butcher that.
We don't.
Okay. And there are others that do come, Brad. So I want to express that Eblith, again, is a great committee, putting together some value for us. And we will come up with, I believe, an event or something in 2017, and other items. I don't want to let too much loose here, okay? Eblith likes surprises. Okay? So everything is well, and we are cultivating Eblith, bringing it out in the public, and I thank you, the council, for helping us get a part-time employee there for...
Hey, Bill? Oh, I have a question.
Sure.
But first, I want to thank you and the committee for this, you know, for your dedication, and congratulate Jerry and Don at the Bank for, you know, receiving this award. But also, as far as the Heritage Committee, is that open, like an open meeting, anyone can come in?
Yes.
Okay, and when and where is that?
We meet the second Tuesday of every month at noon at the Super 8. We were meeting at the church down here, but now you as a city have that building, okay? So we would invite anyone that has an interest, or maybe a desire to do something, come to our meetings. We would be glad to have them.
Did I see something in the water, Bill, one time on the Heritage Committee? Maybe we could put that out there again, just because there's a lot of people that are looking for things to do, you know?
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, are there any other questions?
Just that, a lot of hard work, Bill, no one realizes, gathering all that information and data from over the years. You know, you forget when you lived in a town a long time, what you took for granted is, you know, kind of unique, a lot of different things that went on.
Well, now with the additional exposure, we're getting feedback where people are calling us, giving us items, additional items on Eblith, so we're happy about that. We can research those items and bring those out in the future as well. So we're happy as a committee.
And I too want to personally thank you, Bill, and the entire Heritage Committee for all the work that you've done, and congratulate you on the progress you've made in your endeavors here, so greatly appreciate it.
Okay, thank you kindly. Anything else, any other questions, I mean?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bill. Item number, anyone else from the audience? If not, we'll go on to the consent agenda, approval of payroll, April 16 through the 30th, and facilities use agreement with the Eblith Heritage Committee. Anyone have any questions on those items? Not to call for a motion that we approve payroll and the facilities use agreement with the Eblith Heritage Committee?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hidrava, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. We don't have any public hearings at this time. No unfinished business under new business. J1, consider approving change order number one from Joel and Sop Excavating, the amount That was the previous... No, Rod, that was the original price, and it's going down to 28?
What that is, is the change order to establish final thing for all the final fundlies for the project, and that total project came in $35,000 under, you know, their original contract.
Oh, okay.
So first thing, you have to issue a change order for the contract reduction, and then...
Then their final pay request. Okay.
Even drove it like this, Joe.
Yeah. Geez, that is easy.
Not too often we come on the upside of this stuff.
Therefore, I'd be happy to make that motion, Mayor.
I'd be glad to entertain it. Do I have a support to?
I'll support it on behalf of Councilor Coivin.
Motion made by Lillis, supported by Hidrava, on Councilor Coivin's behalf.
Whatever he's doing, I hope he's watching.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item J2, final pay request from Joel and Sop Excavating for $28,854.03 and 3 cents for 2015 sanitary sewer improvements. So, motion made by Hoag, do I have a support? Support. Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number three, here's a hot item. Donation request from Eblith Fourth of July Committee. Surprise the town stays together after every Fourth of July.
Lot of people.
Takes a toll on this old town.
And the chief, please.
And the chief. This is what we give, I think, every year, is a $2,500 donation?
I think the most recent year is yes, and I guess I would make the motion that we donate $2,500 to Fourth of July Committee.
Do I have a support to that motion?
I will support it.
Made by Lillis, support by Hidrava. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to add, Mayor, that I would like to thank the Fourth of July Committee for all the work that they do. They put in a lot of hours of work to carry this out every year, so. My thanks to each and every one of the folks that are in charge of the Fourth of July Committee group.
Well, they do a good job just by the attendance, seeing town every year.
Yeah.
Biggest draw for us.
Shoulder to shoulder for how many blocks, two or three?
And it's pretty well behaved, too, really.
It has been pretty good.
I don't know if everybody's getting older or what, we're just smarter. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number four, agreements between the city of Eblith and base unit, American Federation of State and County Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO Local 484.
And Mayor, I would have to abstain from voting on this particular issue for a potential conflict of interest.
Oh, okay. I need you two guys to step up to the plate now.
Well, it sounds to me like everything is in order, and I'll make the motion that we accept it.
Motion made by Hidrava, do I have a support?
Yeah, I support.
It's a three-year contract, I think, again? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number five, request to hire temporary part-time library employee. Because Mary Beth's last day is May 31st, she's retired, and we're gonna have Cindy Haltman, who kind of retired, drafted back into service here to help us out, tell we can, whether we can redo the position or...
I think every job description, when somebody leaves after a period of years, deserves some consideration, a rewrite and a review, so we want to be able to do that, meet with the Personnel Committee. We need to post this position within the Still Workers Union, I'm thinking nobody's gonna take it, but then we're gonna have to kind of decide the strategy moving forward to hire a replacement library director.
We're fortunate Cindy was available, because things should just keep moving along without a hitch. No one has any questions, and call for a motion that we hire temporary part-time library employee?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hidrava, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Hoag. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. We moved item six on to item seven. Letter from Harley Owners Group, wrenching chapter 2393 regarding 2016 Minnesota State Hog Rally. From what I understand, have they ever had one in this area before?
I don't think so.
Not to my knowledge.
I understand, it's gonna be a pretty big deal.
Pretty big deal, they really seem to have a pretty well-organized agenda for this, too, and it really encompasses a lot more than Eblith. The whole area is gonna kind of benefit by this.
Do they have an estimate on how many motorcycles would be in the area, Chief?
Public Works Director Rozati and I had met with Mr. Oliver on one occasion, we've been in contact again, and we're gonna have a follow-up meeting prior to this date. They're estimating anywhere up to 450 bikes right now. When we met with them last, there was over 150, I believe, that had signed up. But we have been going through, day by day with them, we requested a agenda, timeline detail for the council. Mr. Rozati and I have met and discussed some closures of various streets that might have to occur for short amount of time. Sounds like they do have a lot of volunteers to be helping out, to have in contact with some of the other chiefs in the area, because there are gonna be ride, but we're gonna have to be assisting with traffic control, but it sounds like it is coming together for them, and it should be a busy weekend, and unfortunate for the public, it could be a little loud at times.
Well, they have to understand that, you know, if you figure half of them got two riders, that's 600 more people in this little town, renting hotels and buying food and gas, and oh my goodness, a lot of things are happening. It's a big boost to the economy for us, and welcome Harley Owners Group, and I hope we have a good show, and I hope they have fun and a safe trip.
Well, they've got rides scheduled all over the place, Healy, Babbitt, Hibbing, I mean, the Quad Cities here is gonna be kind of the hub for all the action, but they've got some events which take them quite a ways away, Towson and Undergrown Mine Tour.
Looks like they have the police from all over looking to help, so they're looking, they've got everybody participating.
And I join in and appreciate that the group has chosen Eblith to be a part of this. I did have one question that I know I'm probably gonna hear something about sooner or later, but it's listed on their itinerary, Saturday, June 25th, they're requesting that we close Hatrick Avenue from Hockey Hall of Fame, although they've got Grand Avenue listed, but I assume they mean Jones Street?
Would actually be right up to the Hockey Hall of Fame, so the entrance by 53 and that would remain open.
Okay, so it'll be actually down to Park Avenue?
Right.
Okay. So we're not thinking about affecting the main business area beyond Five Seasons? Perfect, thank you.
I suppose that's the big draw, because we got a Harley dealer right in town, and they just had a major remodel a couple of years ago, two, three years ago. Tell you what, it's a lot of activity, it takes a lot of planning, all these machines moving around. Looks like they got a pretty good handle on what's going on.
Well, we need a motion to accept this.
Yes, we do.
I'll...
Give our blessing to this.
I will make that motion.
I'll support.
Motion made by Hidrava, support by Hoag. Any further discussion?
You know, let those organizers know that we're excited to have them, and they have all our support. The city.
Tell you what, the old town's gonna be rocking, because what do you got, Fourth of July the next week?
Yes.
Wear everybody out.
Don't you have a bike? You?
I'm gonna be a tom, Mayor, you can borrow mine.
You know, I'd like to get a few more social security checks. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number eight, revision of the lot, land prices and lot prices out in West Eblith, due to the economic conditions and probably the lack of sales of city-owned lots in different areas, to change the pricing, make them more competitive, and we're probably gonna start marketing, I'm assuming, more ourselves.
Yeah, and it'd be nice to see them, you know, online, as we talked in the workshop.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, everybody, when they're looking, everyone looks online, though. Everything is the internet. And I think we'd make it much more marketable, would be, you know, more visible.
Are we ready to market those lots up in Carter Circle, too? No wonder.
Mr. Flynn, again, is working on the plat, so as soon as he tells me we can at least pre-market, then we'll do that, but right now, he's working on the plat.
Yeah, it's nice to have the availability. Out there, you've got the room in town, or kind of squeezed in every bit of land, you know, makes a difference.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on these price changes, for any of these lots?
Just a comment from me, Mayor, that, you know, you already touched on it with the economy, the condition, the way it is, and the fact that we've had some difficulty moving some of these properties over a considerable period of time, I am definitely in favor of updating our pricing to be more market-friendly.
Yeah, you know, when things are booming, you can ask whatever you want, stop sales, but a little tougher now. Anyone else have any questions or anything on the pricing? You need us for us to take some action on this, Jackie? Okay. Call for a motion that we approve the price changes?
So moved.
For these lots? Motion made by Hoag, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Anybody have any updates or commissions or presentations on anything? Brian, you got any words of wisdom?
I probably spoken a little bit more than I needed to tonight, but, you know, we are scheduled to have an EDA meeting next week. We missed our meeting, or this coming Thursday, we missed our meeting last month, unfortunately, so that'd be about all I have. Moment?
Is the EDA meeting this Thursday? That's what I thought. Oh, I thought you said next week.
Yeah, I was in error.
Bradley, you got anything to add?
Nothing, except for there's about 13 days of school left, and the children are starting to wander around all over the place, so drivers, be careful and be wary of the children out there, and drive accordingly.
Brian, you have anything to?
I have a question, I think I saw in one of my emails today, is the fire hall having an open house tomorrow, is it?
That's the EMS proclamation you folks approved at the last meeting, and you did see an email from me that I sent yesterday just reminding all of you of the open house tomorrow from 4:00 to 8:00 PM for EMS week.
Oh, okay. Looks like they're probably gonna have some kind of demonstration up there, too.
I had one request, and last year, we put the slab up there at Lincoln Place, and I know we're thinking of putting a cover over that, kind of a roof, or shade or something, and some of the residents were asking, because I know we put the slab in because we wanted it done right away. What do you think, we can get some quotes on that, see what it costs just to cover it?
Maybe in favor of that, Mayor, I think we have a senior population up there that definitely deserves the attention, so I think that would complement the work that's already been done there, so at least we can look at the prices if nothing else.
So have somebody give us some ideas on that?
Right.
Because it's, I think they bought a grill to put out there, things like that, so...
Just someplace to get out in the sun?
Sun, and in the rain, you can be out there. Anybody have any objection if we give another job to our Public Works Director?
A little smile.
Maybe find somebody to give you some proposals on it, Jerry, just what they suggest?
Okay, you just wanna cover, like, something like over here, or?
I have an idea, I'll talk...
Okay, yeah, just give us some ideas, I'm not concerned about the sides or anything like that, but just to have, you know, cover, I think we got, what is it, 2424 slab we put there?
Yeah.
It's a good size.
I would like to see it match the architecture of the building a little bit, so it fits the setting.
And I've got, since Eblith is the roller derby hub, the Dirty Oars, it's their, with their home base, they send us some complimentary tickets, and I think, for the council, but I think everybody agreed we should, however we raffle those off, Jackie?
We saved all of those green sheets that we pulled the wild tickets from, so we could certainly just tomorrow, Stephanie and I pull out, how many tickets are there, Mayor?
There's 10 tickets, if you had two tickets.
Yeah, we could just... Yeah, we could just pull them out, if that's okay with you folks.
It's really unique, and I think it'd give the public more of an opportunity to go there, because I've been here myself, and it's really interesting, watching it on TV is one thing, but seeing it, and they have the board that explains to you what's going on so you understand the game. Like I say, I've never seen more people down that hip concession standing there lined up to the door. But if you and Steph want to handle this, that's about all I have to bring up. We go to one meeting a month now for the summer.
Sure.
So guys will have to really, you know, do your homework to get everything done. Chief, do you have anything else to bring up?
Just want to wish the public be very happy and safe for Memorial Weekend coming up.
Jerry, you got anything?
I have nothing.
Rod, you got any updates for us?
Only a follow-up on your question about the plat. Basically, the plat's done, and we're just waiting for an update title commitment. We need that or it's submitted for proof, you know, it's kind of proof that you have your type of property.
You know, we picked up the Carter Circle that adjacent, four acres. I was wondering if maybe your crew can take a look at that and give us some, you know, ideas?
Or how to utilize the property.
Yeah, how we would plaid it out, because I know there's a road, like a path that comes right up to the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
And like you say, I don't know how you would arrange the lot stone, I mean, if you guys could take a look at that.
When we made the plat, you know, because we were making the Carter Circle, we reserved it right away along that east border line which abuts that property.
Oh, okay.
We're kind of anticipating some kind of access.
Because, see, there's sewer and water right there, too.
Yes.
Looked on a map, so we're pretty good, because I think you got 3.9 acres there? How we could maybe plot that up into buildable lots? Because there's a real, real nice view up above, you know, Five Seasons there. Jack, do you have anything to add?
I don't think so.
Paul?
Doug? No.
Steph, you got anything to add? Anyone from the audience? If not, I will adjourn the meeting.